It looks like we have some great people in the crowd tonight. Thanks, everybody for being here on this hot July day. Although for those that don't have air conditioning at home, this is actually a nice place to be right now. So, all right, so before we get to some of the fun stuff that we have planned tonight, let's get a few business items out of the way. The first thing is the approval of the agenda. The administration recommends that the board of directors approve the July sixteenth, twenty twenty five board meeting agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Awesome. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, next business item is our consent items. The administration recommends that the board of directors approve the consent to jet items for the July sixteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. Information for one through six in your packet. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Awesome. Any discussion? No? Okay, all right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, let's get to the fun stuff.
Yeah, so there's so much hardware up here. It's like starting to fall down. So we do have a big celebration tonight, and what's so amazing about our transportation department is, so we're wearing these shirts that say team, and they are truly a team. They show up for each other. You've seen this at the retirement ceremonies and it's, I mean, even they're like your potlucks legit. Probably the best potlucks in the in the district. I go to all of them. And I'm speaking with credibility, but they are such a team and they're like the spirit they bring, and they're a rowdy bunch. They are a ton of fun, and I just love being up there with them when I get the chance. And today, I got a video of the bus wash that's like, yay, coming in, it's almost there. So, so we just, I mean, we value what you do every day, and that's what we're here to celebrate. So Pam, come on up. Let's do the honors. Yeah, you can clap for Pam. It's good. Yeah, yeah.
Pick it out? Okay. Good evening, Dr. Dent, board members. I am so proud to be here tonight, so very proud. We are here tonight to recognize one of our outstanding school bus drivers, Kelly Laurie. She had an incredible achievement. Kelly recently took first place overall at the regional school bus safety rodeo in May. Now, at the rodeo, there's two categories you can compete in. There's the transit, which is the flat nose, and then there's the conventional with the nose. And I know, Dr. Dent has other names for those buses. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so first place overall, so that means, you know, she was first place transit. She beat all the buses with the noses. And so first place overall, huge honor. Then, yes, she wasn't done. Then she went off to state to compete at the state level. At the state level, she took first place in the transit category. That's what Kelly drives are the transits. And then she took fourth place overall out of twenty three, I think there's twenty three drivers. Yeah. That is the best in the state, and she finished first place transit, fourth place overall. Outstanding. Huge accomplishment for Kelly, for our department and the district. Last year, Kelly competed as well. She finished third place overall at regionals, tenth place in state. Now, the rodeo tests the driver's ability on every aspect of the job, from rent and knowledge test, pre-trip inspection, student stop and load, backing, parallel parking, just to name a few. There's much more. Lost my place, sorry. To perform this well so early in her career is a remarkable accomplishment and speaks volumes about, Kelly's commitment, professionalism, dedication, and excellence to students' transportation. She's only been driving for two years. Yeah. Two years. Kelly's also had some mentors and coaches, Debbie Lewis and Lynn Yancer, who are now both retired, but have both competed at the state level in the bus rodeo themselves. And we have Lynn in the house. Yeah. Lynn and Debbie generously shared their experiences, time, and insights to help coach and prepare Kelly for the challenges ahead. Their support is a wonderful example of the teamwork that makes our transportation department so special. And Kelly isn't done yet. Oh, no. She's already setting her sights on the international school bus rodeo next year, which will be held in Texas, her home state. Yeah. Representing our district at that level is an extraordinary honor, and I know she'll continue to make us proud. We are incredibly proud of Kelly, not only for her achievements, but for her dedication and excellence she brings to our team every single day, even the summer. She's one of my drivers that works in the summer. She truly represents the best of our department. Thank you very much. And now Kelly would like to say a few words. Kelly, come on up. Talk about your your hardware.
Wow, that was a lot. I just want to say it's an honor to be here, Dr. Dent, the whole school board, and my friends' family, and my teammates. Why be a school bus driver? To make a difference in children's, students' lives. First, let me tell you a little bit about myself and how I became a school bus driver. My name's Kelly Laurie. I'm a mom of two, from Dallas, Texas, as Pam said. Moved to Washington in December of twenty nineteen, and yes, I know that seems backwards. I needed to find a job where I could make a difference in children's lives, and here's why. My little brother, Richard, also known as Mr. Seabird, was a history teacher at McMullen High School in Murphy, Texas. He was an all-in teacher with not just history, but always ready to help. Drama backgrounds, plays, creating a robotics team that made first place in state. But August sixteenth, twenty nineteen, there was a most unfortunate event. At his celebration of life, there were over thirty students that showed up on their own, as well as many colleagues that showed up to honor him. They spoke of his smile that was contagious, how he, how much they respected him, his inspiration, always caring, helpful, attentive, dependable, and he was a true role model. I tell you this so you understand why I needed to find a job to make a difference. It was to continue his legacy, and that's why I became a school bus driver. I was behind the wheel of a school bus in April of twenty twenty three. There have been many days that I had to remind myself, this is for Richard. There are many other days that are a blessing to inspire, care, help, be attentive, be a role model, and a hundred percent dependable. So why stop there? Let me better my driving skills with a school bus rodeo. Obstacles practiced often definitely make for a better driver. I know it has for me in the past two years of driving a school bus. Let me tell you about my team. Our amazing team transportation always represents. Speaking from experience, I have completely bombed one of the obstacles. I got a lump in my throat from wanting to cry and scream at myself for failing, only to come around the corner and see them cheering me on, made me ready to conquer the rest of the obstacles. So in twenty twenty three, I competed as a thirty day rookie. In twenty twenty four, I competed again, and Coach Lynn kept saying, you know, you're going to state. I didn't believe her, but I made third place regionally and made it to state and made tenth place. Here we are in twenty twenty five. Coach Lynn again said, you know, you're going to state. So I placed first place regionally. Even retired, she came up every day before state rodeo and coached as I drove through all the obstacles. She said, you know, you'd be the first one to make it to nationals here. And I made it first in transit and state. I have to give a shout out to Jen. Her videography from the outside of the bus gave me a whole different perspective of where the bus needed to be to win on curbside. Yes, I wanted to live my brother's legacy of making a difference. I'm fulfilling that, and now I'm creating my own. So I'm excited to be the first in the district to make it to internationals and go represent Sumner Bonnie Lake in Kyle, Texas. Do y'all have any questions or comments?
What an inspirational story. Thank you for, you know, thank you for sharing it with us, and I'm so inspired to see your team here, supporting you in this way while you're out representing them at nationals. It's just, there's no really words. It's amazing. Thank you.
There will be a lot of them there, too.
I bet.
Really amazing, and I'm impressed that you parallel park a school bus. I can't parallel park my car. Good thing about that. How'd you do that? That's great.
Mirrors. All the mirrors.
You've really come a long ways in a couple of years. That's astonishing.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much for sharing your story. It's really moving, and I think your brother would be really proud of you.
Thank you.
When is nationals?
Next June twenty seventh and twenty eighth.
Okay, and is it livestreamed? Like, can we watch?
We could probably do something like that.
Perfect.
Well, we'll leave that to Jen.
We'll count on that so we can hear from afar as well. Thank you again for sharing your story.
Yes, thank you.
Kelly, who's here with you tonight? The incredible transportation.
Mom, bestie, godson, husband, and entire transportation. Well, most of it.
That's what happens here. So you mentioned Lynn Yancer, who, Roger, will you go back a couple of slides? She is the goat, right? And Lynn, I mean, I've seen you, and I made this comment at the retirement ceremony, but the way you coach is super intense, compassionate. I mean, you drive like a bus, right? But you also drive them to, I mean, really, this level of excellence that we've never seen. So, I mean, like, that's awesome. And Jen, well, it's, you stepped up and you gave it a shot, too. I mean, I mean, so you guys stress me out when you're, you're competing because it's like, it's like we're also invested in, in all of you. And then when you compete like that, you, you put yourself out there, right? It's like, yeah, Tom, you can't, I mean, look, this is hard stuff. I mean, they try to like drive a bus and not like, touch the balls on the side, and then you gotta like, I don't know. You know what I mean, right?
Offside alley.
Right, it's, it is really tough. And then the cones and, I mean, those cones are, they're just tough. So I'm just so impressed, always impressed. And this hardware, like, this is amazing.
Thank you.
So the big trophy here is a traveling trophy. We get it in our district for a year. The first names on this trophy are from nineteen sixty nine. So this trophy's been around for a while, and yes, we've had it in our district before, and it's an honor to have it back again.
So Lynn, we have some flowers for you, just to recognize your contribution and, I mean, just the standard that you've set. And Jen, have some flowers for you, too. Because, you know, sometimes when you put yourself out there, it's like, hey, you know, that's a, that is a big deal, and you worked so hard. And the notes that your kids wrote you, I mean, they're so precious. I hope you kept that. Yeah, and Stacy and Kelly put them on the side of the bus, and it was really cool. I mean, so, I mean, great job. I've got a picture.
Okay.
I think several pictures, and you know, we gotta get the transportation scheme in here because, like, that's what happens here. So Kelly, these are for you. And then Lynn, come on up. And Jen. Yeah, no kidding. Look at that trophy. I love it. I don't know. Probably transportation, right? Oh, yeah. Well, we should have the spirit award, too. I'm just saying. Yeah. Oh, yeah, all of us. Yeah. Transportation, up here. People in the back. This is one of the tallest. Jeff, please snip in. Transportation, you're also posers, too, because you do the sauce. It's good. I'm gonna do the opposite. So Pam? So they can leave if they want to? You know, I mean, like, now's a good time to say gracefully? Kelly, congratulations.
Thanks.
I might need to go supervise.
Thank you again.
It's on video, so it did that. That's what David was trying to do today.
All right, well, that was a really cool group to celebrate and some amazing achievements by a patient team. All right, so that takes us in the agenda to board member comments. Tom, do you want us to kick us off?
I've got not a whole lot to cover this last month, though. I'm looking forward to this next month, helping give out backpacks to kids, getting ready for school, and telling the events to take off for first year, first time for me, so I'm looking forward to that.
Nice, nice. JB, anything? Yeah, it's a quiet time there. Billy, you want to start down there?
You know, I found myself ready to text you guys just because I kind of lived with you for a month and you were gone completely, but I refrained. Didn't even bother Lori. It was, but it did seem kind of empty after all that time together. So lots of cool things coming up and looking forward to that.
Aaron? Okay, awesome. I don't have any other comments either than, other than I appreciate all the staff that's here on a hot July day in the summer. So appreciate everybody's efforts to put on a board meeting. All right, so that brings us to audience comments. The Sumner Bonnie Lake School Board welcomes public to its meetings. Individuals who wish to address the board should sign up online. Comments are restricted to three minutes. Do we have any public comment?
All right, we do have a public comment tonight. The board recognizes the value of public comment on education issues and the importance of involving members of the public in its meetings. Comments from the public are taken under board advisement and may or may not receive action at a future meeting. Topics including charges or complaints against employees, employment or dismissal of personnel, acquisition of real estate, lawyer-client relationships, campaigning, and parameters for negotiations should not be discussed in audience comment. Other information, questions, or problems can usually be addressed by district staff. The audience comment period will end when all registered speakers have been heard, and the following guidelines will be followed. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support be used. The board will not respond to comments, but will take them under advisement. Speakers should be courteous and professional, refrain from using profanity, vulgar language, threatening or defamatory comments. As a reminder, individuals are not permitted to name a specific staff member, board member, or student during public comments. Failure to do so may result in the board president or designee interrupting or ending the comment. Remember, your words have impact, and you, not the school district, are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it is possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you're unsure of the legal effectiveness of your remarks, please seek independent legal advice. In any case, we ask that you help us model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks and sounds like. The process is as follows. Those who registered by noon yesterday will be heard. Those providing in-person public comment will come to the podium when their name is called. Address the comments to the school board as a whole, and you have three minutes to speak and may not cede or give your time to another speaker. And I will signal with the bell when you have one minute remaining. Our first audience comment this evening is Terry McCoy.
Hi. Good evening, Directors and Superintendent Dent. My name is Terry McCoy, and it's a pleasure to see you all again after myself being absent for a couple of months from attending the school board meetings. I'm here tonight to speak in strong support of adopting a formal district policy that recognizes and upholds the authority of parents as the primary stakeholders in the upbringing, education, and wellness of their children. In March twenty twenty four, the people of Washington State overwhelmingly passed I twenty eighty-one, which established RCW twenty eight A six oh five point zero zero five. Our legislature followed up in twenty twenty five with Senate Bill fifty one eighty-one, which clarified and provided timelines for parental access to student records and curriculum materials, while ensuring transparency in educational services and wellness programs. More importantly, on June twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, the U.S. Supreme Court issued a landmark decision in Maomed versus Taylor. The court clearly stated that parents have the constitutional authority to direct the religious upbringing of their children, including activities, no, including the authority to prior notice and opt-out rights when schools introduce materials or activities that conflict with sincerely held beliefs. The Supreme Court reaffirmed foundational precedents like Yoder and Pierce, stating that parents have constitutional authority to direct their children's religious upbringing, even in public schools. This isn't just a state issue anymore. It's a federal constitutional protection. Parents are not bystanders. Parents are partners. They are the first educators, first counselors, and first protectors of their children's well-being. It is critical that this district recognizes the authority in written board policy, aligned with RCW twenty eight A six oh five point zero zero five, Senate Bill fifty one eighty-one, and reinforced by the Maomed decision. A clear parental authority policy will build trust between the district and all families, prevent confusion or conflict over sensitive topics, and ultimately strengthen student success through respectful cooperation with all families. I urge you to act swiftly in adopting this policy, not just as a legal formality, but as a clear affirmation of parent-school partnership. Parental authority is not merely statutory, but constitutional. Thank you for your service to the community, and I look forward, sincerely, look forward to your leadership on this essential issue.
That is our final audience comment for the evening.
All right. All right, next, we got a little bit of a special agenda tonight with a budget hearing. So at this time, we'll reassess the regular board meeting and begin our time we'll hear a presentation from our Chief Financial Officer, Brian Verily, on the twenty five twenty six budget.
President Lewis, Superintendent Dent, all distinguished members of the board, it's my pleasure to talk about the preliminary budget. And next month, you get to adopt this budget that we're talking about tonight. High level, I like to remind everybody what exactly is a budget, because there's rules in Washington and exactly what we have to do for the budget here. But a budget is just a plan at a point in time, and the truth is, it's information based on what we had about a month ago. We will alter it a little bit as we get new information, but really, it's what we knew best at that point in time. And it is a plan for the following school year. It's required by RCW, and it is filed with the Office of Superintendent Public Construction, OSPI as we know it, and it's filed through the local ESD, and then they forward it to OSPI. And it shall include estimated revenues, again, estimated revenues, estimated expenditures, and estimated fund balance for each year. And then we're also required to do a four-year projection at the end. So high level, one of the things that it does, it gives us spending authority per fund. So these are the amounts of spending per fund. Two hundred and seventeen million dollars for the general fund. Not going to read them all, but you can kind of see them there. They're all there. Most of the presentation, we're going to talk about the general fund. That's the operating fund of the district. That's where just about everything we think about comes out of, except for with the capital building going on right now. Capital projects fund is getting a decent amount of activity, but this is the day-to-day operations of the school district out of the general fund. It's all the education programs, all the food service, all the transportation, the maintenance of the buildings, and administration of the building. The number one driver of revenue is the students. On a high level, we get about eleven thousand dollars per student, per FTE technically, full-time equivalent student. It does vary based on grade level, because the prototypical funding model and the staffing reaches a different grade level. But if you want to think high level, it's about eleven thousand dollars per student. So the more students you have, the more money you get. As you lose students, you lose that money. We're use a cohort advancement method, looking at historical growth rates per grade level. And we're projecting growth of about fifty students last year. That's about the same it was between twenty two, twenty three, and twenty three, twenty four. It's a little bit less than we're seeing this year from last year, but the reason for that is you have certain cohorts of classes that are bigger than others. Our senior class this year, that's going to leave us next year, is about ten percent, it's about eight point seven percent bigger than the prior senior class. So that was a kind of big chunk going through. It's going to drop off, and the kindergarten students coming in had been lower. But at the same time, there are students moving into the district. So with all these moving parts, we think we're going to be about fifty students bigger, which is about a half a percent growth. If you look over the past ten years, the district has averaged right a little bit above one percent growth per year. So this is a little bit lower, but again, because the senior class dropping off and lower kindergarten enrollment, that's what we are projecting right now. Another thing I want to know, attached to your board agenda is the actual F one ninety-five that this is a summary of. So you can go through that two hundred and thirty-two page document, and actually, this is high level. I would not mind sitting down with any member of the board, any member of the community member who has questions on the details of how we come up with it and really dig it in, like the enrollment slide I just showed. Page seven shows per grade level and per student program, what we're projecting there. And then near the end of it, there's a multi-year student projection growth the same way. Okay, high level. General fund, what's really changing at the high level? We say we're going to have two hundred and seven million dollars in revenues. Notable changes. The amount from the local levy is going up by about four and a half million dollars. Our general apportionment, that's the large amount we get from the state, from the prototypical funding model. That's going up about three point four million, but that has many components to it. One of the components is a two point five percent IPD adjustment to salaries and supplies that are in that formula. And if you look at that two point five percent, that accounts for about two point four million of that three point four million. We're also getting just a hair over five hundred thousand dollars from that enrollment growth that we're projecting next year. Then the legislature this year did an adjustment to MSOC's material supplies and operating costs above the IPD, and that's another about thirty, I think it was thirty seven dollars per student. So at just over ten thousand students, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a little bit more than that. And then CTE, a smaller adjustment. The state also adjusted the formula for special education. That's, but that's combined with the formula adjustment with IPD. That's, but that's combined with the formula adjustment with IPD to that formula also. There's another $2.6 million. So those are the big revenue growth items. These are the big chunks of money, and this is how much they've grown by. Any questions before I go on on kind of the revenue changes this year to next year? Okay. So on the expense side, for the general fund, we're projecting expenditures of $217.5 million. Now, if you, I want to be technically correct. It's general fund expenditures of $214.904 million in general fund expenditures and a $2.6 million transfer from the general fund for capital, capital projects for things the board approved over the last few years that have yet to be completed that are non-bond projects. So round off, and you had $250 million of general fund expenditures and two and a half of a transfer. So what are the major changes there? Well, our biggest expense category is certificated salaries. If we look at the object later, and that is going up by $6.8 million based on a new collective bargaining agreement. I shouldn't use abbreviations in the PowerPoint, but CBA is collective bargaining agreement and continuing bargaining agreement for the principles that is currently in place. There's a cost that's in there that's adding $6.8 million certificated salaries and step and column movement. Classified salaries, the same thing, new agreements, current agreements that have increases in every year and step movement of employees. Employee benefits. There's an increase of the medical premium rates through SEB, which is the insurance that all employees who have over 630 hours receive. I have that, I don't want to misstate this. That is going up from $14,136,000 to $15,684. That's the employer share. So that's just over a 10% increase on the premium rates of insurance. We're not funded for all that. Part of the apportionment funds, part of that, we're not funded for all the positions we're staffed over that. That's a significant increase to the cost of the district. Increase in Washington family-paid medical leave premiums. Just about every year since 2019 when that began, the premiums go up because usage is higher than originally projected. So not only does that cost us more in substitutes, because those people are taking days off for that, but the actual premium goes up every year. Correct, almost every year. It goes up in January, so we can only project where it's going to go up next year. We won't know until the December timeframe. But this January, it went up from 0.74% to 0.92%. There, we do actually get a savings decrease of retirement rates. Those rates, they have actuarial studies behind them, and the Department of Retirement Services do change the rates almost every year. Sometimes it's more of a two-year period, but they go up and down. And this year, they're going down by about 2% for the teachers' retirement system and a similar amount for other school employees. So we're getting a real savings there. And then even when rates stay the same, but salaries go up, the insurance costs go up. So FICA, Medicare, like the rates have stayed the same forever. But when you pay more in salaries, you pay an extra $10 million in salaries. Well, if the rate combined is 7.65%, you're paying $765,000 more for that. So altogether, sum that up, about $2.8 million more in employee benefits. You've seen property and liability insurance going up just about every year. Another $500,000 for next year, and that is a final number. We did get those rates. Increased cost of special education, out-of-district placements, about a million more dollars. And then McKinney-Vento Foster Youth Transportation, about $200,000 more for next year. So again, there's a lot of other little things that change. These were the big changes year over year. Any questions here?
What is out-of-district placement?
There are certain special ed students that we just don't have the ability to provide services for, really high-need students. And the cost of the services are going up significantly for the placements we have and we know about. So where does our money come from? The vast majority comes from the state, about 76% for us. And so you see that's $156 million. Local, we get about 20%. There's two major categories in local. There's the local levy that I talked about before, about $35 million for next year. And then local non-tax, that's stuff like food service sales. It's the tuition for preschool and daycare. It's donations to schools. It's a lot of small sales altogether. It's also significantly about $1.5 million is the interest that we receive on our fund balance. Well, that's one of the few things actually going down. As the fund balance goes down, the interest earnings go down. So that's one of the few things actually decreasing here. At the federal level, we get about 3% of our money from the federal government. There's been a lot of talk recently about certain federal programs. I do want to bring that up. So there's a Title II, there's Title III, and some other smaller programs that are in jeopardy. We really don't know. They are in the budget. We're assuming we're going to get funded like we did last year. It adds up to about just under $400,000 for those programs. We are not, we have not heard any word that we're going to lose anything or there's any threat to Title I or the National Food Service Program and or the special ed money we get from federal government. It's these programs. So if you think on a percentage term, that's just under 2/10 of 1% of our total revenue. But for those programs, they could really be impacted. Small percent of the total, but programs could be impacted. And we'd have to make adjustments to those programs going forward if that does change. So where does the money go? Remember, this is about 200
Can I jump in? No. Have approximate knowledge of when the federal government will give us that decision?
I wish I knew. They're reviewing it currently, and they're, they have their own congressional hearings and decisions they have to make. But there's a lot, it's a lot of talk, but nothing known in reality.
Yeah, and these are some pretty vulnerable students in those categories that
They are vulnerable students in those categories. And that's the real negative side. And the spin I'm trying to put on it, our total revenue is a small amount. Luckily, we right now have a fund balance. We could make adjustments, but we might have to take money away from somewhere else to put it there long-term if that's, money stays away permanently.
Yeah, well, hopefully, the federal government doesn't take that money away from us.
Thank you.
Especially since it was already approved?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some strange things happening.
And to be clear, it's before and after-school care, right? It's multilingual, language learners.
Right.
Right? So when you, when you speak, you know, most vulnerable students.
It is. It's, and it's good to highlight that. I don't want to push back against that, because we're, they're talking about taking that money away. But for our multilegal program that we run in our district, we get about $1 million from the state, and we get about $70,000 from the federal government for the multilingual program specifically. But that's, that $70,000 is part of that $400,000 that's in jeopardy. We need to be careful, because there are some districts in the state that are much more reliant on this money. We are not very reliant on this money. There's some districts that this makes up a much bigger percentage of their revenue. It's just because of the student population we have here is a little bit different.
Yeah, I can appreciate that the work that the accounting team puts into making sure that we are our whole, and it comes to that sort of thing. And I certainly appreciate that other districts will be hit harder than us. But it's just disappointing to see money taken away from vulnerable children that need that support.
And like Aaron's point, when it was already kind of promised.
Yeah, it wasn't just promised, it was approved and delivered, but it's being pulled back.
Okay, no, that is good. And I like the discussion. On the expenditure side, I have three different ways we're kind of looking at expenditure that the state has as presented in the budget. How much we're spending by what they call object code? It's kind of the what you're spending it on. Again, $250 million. 84% of it is on people. So we have the certificated salaries, classified salaries, and employee benefits. Remember, this is budget. I think actual came in at 85% in a recent year, but it's in that ballpark. It's coming at 83%. It's been that way consistently. Supplies, it's budgeted at 6%. It hasn't come in that high in a few years. Purchase services is budgeted at 10 based on everything we know. And then travel and capital outlay, while they say zero here, that's because of rounding. They're both less than 0.5%, but there actually is money being spent on travel and capital goods in the few hundred thousand dollar range, I believe in both of them. Same $250 million. Now we're looking at expenditure by program. So which programs are we spending the money on? Regular education is our biggest program, and that's where we're spending most of our money. Special education is also a large program. You see we're spending money. And many other compensatory education, that's where most of the title programs actually fit in. So just so you know, but there's also some state programs in there. Those are the supplemental programs to the basic education for the disadvantaged students in different ways. And then support services, you see that 70%? That's food services, that's transportation, that's my department, that's human resources, that's the general administration of the district. One more way of looking at that same $215 million. This is by activity. And the next slide actually have the definitions, because some people ask questions on those. But at a high level, we all know what teaching activities are, but you can see the definition next page. And teaching support is kind of the TOSs, and that's also instructional material and stuff supporting that. Other support services, that's where your transportation and food services falls in, and you're building, you know, maintenance and things like that. And then to be clear, how much is spent at school sites on administrative activities there? And how much is spent district-wide on administration activities? Here's the definition for the groups on the slide, Bill. I'm not going to go over this, but it's here just for your reference. Staffing, as we said, is our biggest expense. So what are we looking at staffing levels? We are trying to stay pretty flat over the next number of years, because we're going to have to at least stay flat based on the total receiving 207 and spending 217. Not going to talk much more about that, but I think it should be clear. So this is a high level. We think we're going to start next year at about $35 million. And again, that's based on kind of what we knew as of June and looking at projections and trends in prior years and budgets of different departments. The revenues of 270 million, you spend 214, you transfer out 2.6. That'll leave you with a fund balance of 25 million, and that's a decrease of about $10.1 million. So we will have to make adjustments going forward. Why the need for fund balance? The federal programs are a great example. So we don't have to react instantaneously. We have time, if you have a fund balance, to make thoughtful decisions about what you really want to do and have discussions if you determine that money is really going away. Cash flow fluctuations also throughout the year. We don't get the same amount from the state every month. We get two big months, we get big levy amounts, and so that helps cover that. So you don't have to do short-term loans, which would cost more money for a need to borrow. Bond ratings, we know we have to sell some more bonds. We know the rating agency talked about how important it is to keep a 15% fund balance to keep the ratings possibly increased, or at least where they are. And then emergencies, we don't know what's going to happen. One month is about 8% of expenditures, a little bit more technically. Extraordinary events, living disruptions, enrollment changes, program impacts, and yeah, like federal changes. As part of the presentation, you have a question?
Oh, quick question. I could probably do the math, but you probably have it in your head. What's 15% of the, for the fund balance?
Okay.
Okay.
No, no, no. At 200 million, it would be $30 million. And so you add a little bit to that, it's 33 something million dollars. I don't have that, I didn't calculate that before. Something will happen in the future.
No, that was just, I wonder what that is. Thank you, sorry.
Yes, so that's a bit over $30 million. Part of a disclosure that the state requires us, we have to disclose how much we're getting from the state for MSOCs and then how much we plan on spending in MSOCs. So that's all this is. And if you, the kind of the last bullet point, I'll go back. If you're not spending everything the state gives you, you have to develop a plan. Well, we're budgeting to spend everything the state gives us and more. So we don't really have to spend a plan, because we're spending some levy money on top of everything the state gives us on MSOCs. The multi-year for the general fund, this is based on trend analysis and what we think is going to happen and some known agreements that are in place. But I would not rely on a four-year forecast of what's going to happen. This is kind of what would happen if trends now continued and we don't make adjustments that we know we're probably going to have to make. Any questions here? Okay. So the other funds, that's all general fund. Now we're going to fly through the other funds. But if you have any questions or want to talk about one of the other funds, let's do that. So Associated Student Body Fund, ASB Fund, it's a special revenue fund for holding student-related fees, used for account for the funds raised by students for their extracurricular activities. And the first column is the budget. And actually, each school site, ASB, has to do a budget, and students have to approve the budget. And we combine them all, and that's what you see here. And then we, we ourselves do the multi-year, guessing what's going to happen. Transportation vehicle fund, this is what we buy buses from. And that's really all that happens in this fund. And we want to make sure we have enough money appropriate to buy buses based on the money we have for buses. Capital projects fund, this is obviously where we're doing our building from. And the tech levy is part, it goes into this fund, and expenditures come out of this fund. For the multi-year projections, we are guessing, not, it's more than guessing. We have ideas on where we're going to sell the other bond sales, but that could obviously change based on the progression of the, of the buildings. And then debt service fund, this is where we pay for the debt that's borrowed. This is how we pay it back. We receive the payment, we receive a big amount from taxpayers twice a year. And then a few months later, we make the interest and principal payments on that. And this is based on a debt schedule that I could also share with people if they want to get into that. Questions?
Any questions? It appears that you were extremely thorough in your presentation and your information. So since there doesn't seem to be any questions.
Yeah, well, luckily, we don't just talk about budget once a year during these hearings, right? So I appreciate how concise this is. I really liked the little extra definitions you included on each thing, too. I thought that was helpful, especially for, you know, people who might not know and haven't been through a hearing before. I thought it was a great presentation. Again, it just kind of echoes conversations and information you've been giving us regularly the last few months.
Thank you. There, there's one more slide here that's kind of deleted. But it's a thank you slide for all the team, because I'm not the person who does all this work. Two of them are right here. I'm going to point out Kathy, she's the lead, that, that 232-page document. She did the majority of the work on it. And then Matt is super involved in the entire budget process. They're here, but there's other people not here. I want to make sure they get the thank you for all the work they do. They're diligent, they, they put in a lot of hours, and there is a lot that goes into this.
I just want to say one thing. I wanted to thank you for also offering not only to us, but to anybody in the community to sit down with you and go through any of this that they have questions about. That level of transparency is really, is really appreciated. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. I actually enjoy that, maybe a little bit sick, but you know. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's a good thing that there's been a stewardship over the last decade to create a fund balance that we can use in emergencies like
I'm grateful for that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And you know, Brian, I just want to point out on the slide, we have that slide that you're talking about.
Okay, awesome.
Kathy and Matt are incredibly, I mean, they're just incredibly amazing human beings. I mean, you're brilliant in how you manage all this. But there's also a team in HR that helps out with this as well. Shelley, Miriam, Stephanie, like it's a, like there's smoke coming up from the first floor when they start putting this budget together, because everybody's brain is working so hard. I just appreciate everything you do. But it's a, there's a big team behind this budget.
There's a team, and I thank you for finding the slide, and thank you for mentioning them.
Yeah, we have it.
Since there's one more, Amanda is also a thanks on the slide. She's administrative assistant in my department, and she gets into the weeds with us, just so you know.
All right. And as, kind of as part of this special part of our meeting, this being a budget hearing, there is an opportunity during the budget hearing for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment regarding the budget? Okay, if there are no speakers, then we will move back to our regular board meeting at this time. All right. And our next item on the agenda is an action item for the board. It's resolution number nineteen slash twenty-four twenty-five petty cash fund reduction. The administration recommends the board adopt resolution number nineteen twenty-four twenty-five for petty cash fund reduction under the terms of WAC twenty-eight A dot six five dot four zero zero. As in Crestwood Elementary has determined they no longer need petty cash funds due to inactivity and wish to return the petty cash funds to the district for depositing to the general fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? Seems like a pretty easy one. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, for information, budget status report, the chief financial officer, Brian Verley, will provide a May budget status report to the board for your, for information. And that's in your packet. All right, our next action item has to do with Strong Minds Kind Hearts Project that we talked about at our last study session. The district administration recommends that the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Board of Directors formally endorse Strong Minds Kind Hearts as a board-supported district-wide focus for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. This focus supports the district's strategic plan and affirms our promise to know, value and support every student. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Does a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? It's going to be a great program.
Question I have is board-supported, and we've talked before about wanting to be involved and active. I'm wondering if we could set some time up for discussion time that we could work on what are some possibilities of things we would like to do to add to this and participate in the activity?
That could be a topic at our next study session.
Yeah, or if a couple of you wanted to, two of you want to meet with me next week or soon, we could do that as well. And then you could act as a liaison to your other partners or then I can meet with two more of you. I just can't meet with three of you at once.
Yes. Yeah, well, then it becomes an open public meeting. There's quorum, it's all that. So yes, we got to make sure we stay in line with the law. All right. That, any other discussion? All the, to clarity, no, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, we get to have another opportunity to learn some more here with the presentation. Principal from, forgive me if I'm saying Hutball and Oremus. Kevin Oremus will present the schematic design and educational specifications from the Sumner High School Phase Two Expansion to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Dan and Board of Directors. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce Kevin Oremus. We've had the privilege to work with him for these past few months, preparing these educational specifications, working on schematic design for the Sumner High School Phase Two. And it's a real pleasure to work with Hutball Oremus and Kevin in particular. So I hope that you get to enjoy him and you'll be seeing lots of him over the coming years. And it's a pleasure to introduce him, Kevin.
Welcome, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I think it's been our pleasure to work with the district. It's, it's been a super great experience thus far. But I'm Kevin Oremus, but I am representing Hutball and Oremus Architecture. We are pleased to be the architects for the Sumner High School Replacement Project. And we're requesting the board adopt the proposed resolution for accepting the educational specifications for Sumner High School project as required by OSPI. And would also like to just take a quick, this opportunity to do a quick overview of where we're at in the process. So the the educational specifications, the purpose of that document is to prepare an architectural program identifying space requirements and relationships for, for the project. The document provides a framework to identify, organize and describe critical elements of the project itself. The, this information will guide decision-making throughout the design, planning and construction process. And, and it will ensure that decisions and priorities are based on shared common values and user needs. So this programming process started back in February of this year with a collaborative group of thirty stakeholders consisting of district staff, teachers, Sumner High School students who provided input, vision and educational values and user needs for the project. And so we had regular meetings with this group, district staff and targeted focus groups representing each department of the high school over the preceding five month period up through June. So the success of these ed specs is in large part due to the dedication and guidance provided by these groups of individuals that participated and helped facilitate the, the process that we put down into the written program. So a portion of the programming work was to identify which programs would be located in the Phase Two building and allocate appropriate square footage for each room to support its intended function. All with a commitment to manage the process to, to stay within budget of this particular phase of the project. And then we got very specific, looking at every space in this addition and worked with staff to identify requirements for furniture, finishes, casework, specialty items that were required in each space. So there's, the document contains very detailed descriptions of what each space needs for proper program educational delivery and, and stuff for, for the needs of, of the, the, both staff and teachers and students. So the culmination of the program process resulted in a comprehensive written document. And again, be used to facilitate the advancement of the design and the construction. And we'll come back to this document quite often to make sure what we heard is being reflected in, in the design clear through construction, the priorities and, and the division and the vision and, and things that we heard from all stakeholders involved. And so that gave us a solid foundation to proceed into the schematic design phase of the project. And you've probably seen this before, but consistent with the original master plan, Phase Two will be a three-story building constructed on the west side of campus along with a greenhouse and animal science building. And also a new parking lot to the west that'll add about a hundred and twenty-one parking spaces. Just a brief overview floor by floor. You know, it contains some exciting and much improved aspects of functionality and, and relationships as we're able to do with a new design. In the lower left-hand portion of the building is a tiny Sparts daycare. And it is convenient and controlled access for parent pickup and, and drop off, which is, which is really nice. And then above that is the developmental learning program, which is up near the west entrance and convenient and adjacent to drop off and, and pickup area. And then on the north half of the building, career and technical education spaces, some of the larger spaces on the lower floor with robotics and aerospace manufacturing. Then AgSci and Horticultural Science there near the greenhouse and, and the, and the animal science building there. So it's been great to really do a project that we can make the relationships and adjacencies work and the connections for, for staff and student to help improve program delivery. Then the second floor, the south half is more, is core curriculum classrooms. And, and to the north are additional career and technical education labs grouped together. All of these programs are connected to, or this building is connected to the, to the main Phase One new building at Sumner High School through a wide corridor and then goes north and south. So very efficient and good wayfinding. And then the upper floor consists mostly all of core curriculum, general classrooms and support areas. So kind of a bird's eye view of, of the Phase Two building there with its older sister in the background. You can kind of see down in the bottom right, the tiny Sparts daycare area we're talking about in the drop off. And then the main entry as you move up. And some of the sustainable attributes that will go into this building with photovoltaic panels up on the roof to supplement for energy and, and some of those exciting aspects as well. A view from Main Street showing similar character for a unified campus look. And then finally from the, from the west parking lot, a view there across. You can kind of see the greenhouse on the left there. So in conclusion, I can report that working with your staff and community has been a real pleasure thus far. And the project is on schedule for construction to start next summer with completion early in twenty twenty-eight. And we just received current, current construction estimate based on the documents that we've progressed so far. And we're on budget and intend to, to stay that way. Yeah, so.
He's like, it's real.
Yeah. So all good news today? No, the new admin will be part of Phase Three. So after this is done, yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Just curious, looking at the parking lot, is there just one way in and one way out on that parking lot on that street?
No, there's a way, one way in and out on Main Street and also on Woods Avenue. In and out.
And in only on Main Street for the special.
That's right.
Right. Yeah.
Great.
And the way it's pictured, school bus pickup is in the back of the building now, is that? Yeah.
Yeah. Separated. I start, C L T, staff, the print, all be out of the wood parking lot. Students coming in, students coming in on buses are in Mason and Terranoff, probably in the foot. So everything's known, it's graphic from interact, you know, from.
Conflicting.
Yep.
Backing up.
Yeah, and in the future, say this, this west building, what's it, is a staff. Regular operation, the main student body is coming in.
When we get to Phase Three.
Yeah.
Great. Great presentation. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Well, now that we've seen the wonderful information presented, opportunity to take action on that. The district administration recommends that the SPLST Board of Directors adopt resolution number twenty slash twenty-four twenty-five Phase Two Sumner High School Education Specs to expand and replace Sumner High School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? Moving along according to plan and we appreciate all the hard work. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, on to policy matters to take action on. In accordance with policy thirteen ten, adoption and amendment of policies and bylaws, the following policies are included for adoption. The district administration recommends the board adopt the following district policies in accordance with policy thirteen ten, adoption amendment of policies and bylaws. We have policy thirteen zero five, thirteen zero six, thirteen twenty-four, fifty-ten, fifty-eleven and fifty-thirteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you for the double motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, information's on the agenda. In accordance with policy thirteen ten, adoption amendment of policies and bylaws, the following policies are included for first reading and review. We have policy twenty twenty course design selection, adoption of instructional materials and policy twenty twenty-one library information and technology programs. You'll find more information in your packet. We also have information only in accordance with policy thirteen ten that we just talked about. We also have board procedures, board procedures thirty-two oh five P, thirty-two oh, thirty-two oh five P dot two, thirty-two oh six P, thirty-two eleven P, thirty-two twenty-four P, fifty-ten P, fifty-eleven P and fifty-thirteen P. Again, all information in your packet. And the last thing on our agenda here for information only transparency, our general counsel is for support to the filed with the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District or last year. And is there any topics anybody'd like to discuss tonight? It is, it is summertime after all. Okay, so on that note, I would like to announce the next four regular board meeting. Board meeting has been scheduled for Wednesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Will begin at six PM here in the central office of boardroom. We are adjourned.